Welcome to your City Commission Study Session. Please turn off or silence all cell phones during the meeting. Meetings are televised every day on Channel 2 at 7:00 PM and midnight, and available for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. First item on the agenda is a quarterly report from the Leavenworth USD 453. Dr. Roth.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you once again for the opportunity to address the Commission on some events that's going on at USD 453. First of all, would like to thank the Commission, the city, Police Department, and everyone that was involved with our homecoming parade. It was a true success to see the excitement and walking up and down the streets and seeing the turnout for that. The ability for our students to kind of experience that community feel, that's pretty special. And it doesn't go without saying that it takes a lot of work on the city's behalf to be able to allow us to pull that off. And so, from the school district standpoint, we're very appreciative for that. Construction, the bond is all complete. We are just doing a few punch list items at our elementary schools with the new collab spaces that we put in at the three neighborhood elementary schools, and a few more punch list items up at Lawson itself. But for the most part, the bond is complete. And we're very fortunate to live in a community that supported our school through that. And I really believe our students will prosper in the current alignment and the current setup that we have as a school district now. I think USD 453 is set up for facility, set up facility-wise for many, many years to come. And so, we're excited about that. And being able to see the turnout on parents' back-to-school nights and seeing the excitement and the ribbon cutting and all of that really bodes well for our community and for our school district as a whole. So, we're excited about that. One exciting piece of news, David Brewer. As you know, a few years ago, we talked about our district joining. Commissioner Watson's vision for redesigning Kansas schools, and David Brewer and the high school were part of the original redesign of the districts. David Brewer was selected to do a series. So, there was a 37-minute video that was shot at David Brewer that was aired on the public broadcast system. And so, there were six episodes. David Brewer was the first. I tell everybody it's because we were the best. But that will be released. If you're not able to see that, I know there's been some snippets out on Facebook and on that. But as soon as the last series is shown, I think it's like the second or third of November, we will release that to our community. Because they really, and you really, need to be able to see what has really transpired over time. And really, that's flown throughout all the buildings. But David Brewer was highlighted, and the teachers and staff in that building are second to none. And so, we're excited about that because I think it's a great positive thing, not only for our school district, but for our community as well. A big thing for coming up in a few weeks, the Wizard of Oz. And those of you that attended the parade, the theme was Wizard of Oz. That leads into our play. And so, we're excited to have the students involved with that. And I believe that's the second week in November, when that play is going to be. And I know Commissioner Priceinger always loves to hear about enrollment, so I brought our enrollment count.
I was just asking.
So, this is our unaudited number. But in the years past that I've given this, I've always been kind of gloomy about it. Actually, our buildings are up. And our overall head count is up 75, and our FTE is up 71.4. Our building counts by head count, Anthony has a 293 student population. David Brewer has a 339. And I tell people all the time that this is the field of dreams. Our Lawson, Lawson is now our largest elementary in the district. It has a head count of 383 students. So, we're excited about that. Henry Leavenworth has 328 students. Our intermediate school has 497 students. Our middle school has 476 students. Our high school has 1,287 students. Our virtual school has 85 students. And then, our netty, Hartnett, it fluctuates right between, anywhere between 20 and 30 students. And that can vary really on a weekly basis. And so, overall, as I said, we're up 75 students. Head count-wise, we have a total head count of 3,688. Where last year, we had 3,613. And so, that, to me, is a positive sign, not only for our community, but for our district as well. So, that's what I have to report to the Commission tonight. So, I would be open to any questions that you may have.
How does Henry Leavenworth compare to like last year with the changes in the classes?
So, all of, I don't have the exact, like, the differential right in front of me. But with the kindergarten coming out, we'd already pulled the fifth grade out. So, we're, in each of our buildings, each of our kindergarten classes, we're anywhere between 60 and 90 kids. The smaller district, like Lawson, would have had roughly around 60 kindergarten kids. David Brewer would be right in the neighborhood of anywhere between 85 and 100 kids. Henry would be the same, and Anthony would be somewhere between 75 and 85.
So, you lost approximately 100 kids in that school?
In each of those buildings. And that was the design of the...
That's curious because of the traffic.
Right. So, that was the design of the configuration, is to give each of those buildings an opportunity to grow, and that was our hope. The traffic, the school board will be receiving another drawing, this next school board meeting, on a possible another solution out at Henry for parking and the stacking out there. And so, most likely, our hope is, is that they would make a decision to, a final decision in December with a, like, turning of the dirt probably sometime right after school's out in May.
Okay.
Can I just follow up on that? So, is the situation the first few months of the school year better out there with respect to the traffic concern along Viola's in the vicinity of Henry Leavenworth? Or, because I know that, I think, the school district put in a bus lane, didn't they?
We did. And so, we added a bus lane, and then, we've allowed cars to come in so they wouldn't cross over our buses. It was the purpose of the bus lane, and then, that would get more cars off the street. That has been successful. However, there's still some stacking, roughly about 15 to 17 minutes worth of stacking on the road where before it was hours. However, now, we're getting through that line much quicker than what we've had in the past. So, to answer your question, Commissioner Griswold, I believe it's a lot better, but it's all in perspective.
Right. And that'll be addressed with maybe another option or two?
So, the board has requested a couple of different options to look at. The disadvantage to that, it will eat up a lot of the green space that we currently have out there by that.
Sure.
But as a district, we've also added a lot of different green spaces in different areas. And so, it won't affect the playground or that type. But the new designs all affect some of the green space that we have out there.
Could I ask one more question on facilities? I know last spring, I think, before the season started, the baseball and softball complex, how did that get completed? I mean, it looks like it's complete.
Yes, it's complete. The natural fields, we're giving a little more time to fill in and let the turf kind of root down. But as far as overall completion of that facility, it is complete, yes.
Are the teams happy, or the students and the coaches happy with what they have?
Everything that I've heard, not only from our own students and coaches, but from traveling teams and communities, it's, they're very thrilled and honored to be able to have a facility like that.
It looks fantastic. I haven't been right in any of those stadiums or fields, but from a little distance in the parking lot, it looks really, really good.
It's beautiful. It actually is. And so, we've had some drone shots, and it's pretty incredible to see.
Great.
Dr. Roth, 75 increased students. Is that equally divided over the, basically, the seven attendance centers? Or did preponderance of it go to the high school, or how is it split?
Right. So, each of our buildings seen some of an increase. David Brewer and Lawson, the early education center at Lawson were probably our two biggest growth as far as students. I mean, 75 over 3,600, it's not a very high percentage, but it beats dropping 75 to 100 that we've done the last several years.
Do you attribute it to more housing, more people? Or are there some out-of-district transfers?
I would say our out-of-district transfers, both in and out, have been very consistent. So, I wouldn't say it was that. I would say that, you know, I think some of it's the pandemic. So, I think some homeschool students that were traditionally more homeschool, I think they're coming out of some homeschooling. I think that some kids were coming out of virtual schools. I think just the excitement of being back in buildings. And I think a lot of what our community's done with the new businesses, and I think that it has drawn some people to Leavenworth that we hadn't had in the past. And I think with the new loft openings and all of those types of things, it actually boded pretty well for us.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I do.
Yes.
Dr. Roth, I know in other areas of the country, especially last year, but still probably the trickle effect this year. But in your opinion, for the Leavenworth School District, have the grades suffered at all through this whole thing? Or they, did you see a lot here since we were hybrid and then really more in?
Right. And so, that's a great, I mean, honestly, that's one of the, that's kind of like a million-dollar question in a lot of ways. One of the things that our post-test and pre-test have shown, some growth, but also some deficiencies as well. So, certain areas, like our math scores, were dipped a little more, where our literacy and reading scores held pretty steady and actually increased a little bit. So, it kind of varied in that, but we have seen some learning loss. And one of the things that we're trying to do with some intercessions in summer schools and some tutoring opportunities at the different buildings is to try to catch students up, especially the students that may not have the family support at home due to working or other needs that they may have. But yes, we have seen some learning loss, not as significant as what we thought. But there are pockets that definitely need to be addressed.
Okay. No, thank you very much.
One more question for clarification. The Lawson Kindergarten Center, or early, what is it called? Early Education Center? That's year-round, is it not?
So, it's not technically year-round. The calendar's different for that building than it is. Like, right now, they're on, they're just finishing up a three-week intercession. But in that intercession, we had like 65 kids that signed up to stay, and we had staff there to stay for enrichment and that, kind of that catch and learn opportunity. So, in theory, some kids will be able to stay in that building almost year-round. But the calendar goes from now through, it started the same day in August, and it'll go to the end of June, so they have July. And the theory behind that was, is to try to have as much time with students in school and less time in that summer break. So, we try to catch them to build that foundation in first grade. And so, this is the first year, kind of our pilot year. We've already experienced a few aha moments as far as timing and that. And so, we'll continue to tweak it. But I really believe for those early learners like that, that it's a great opportunity for those students and those families to make sure that that foundation is much stronger as they go into first grade.
How many intercessions are there?
There's two, three-week ones. And then, there's over Christmas, we're not, there's no intercession over Christmas. It matches up. So, really, like, right now, then there's one in the spring. And then, that gives the teachers realistically their summer break over this time. And then, the teachers that choose to work, we hire back for those intercession teaching moments.
And what's the course of study for those 65, 70 students during the intercession? Are they bouncing ahead, or the other kids then? The other kids coming in?
Some, if they, there's some enrichment, there's some catch-up, and there's just some foundation building in that. And so, it varies based on the ability of the student, and that's how the building was designed.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, sir.
All right. You all have a great evening.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Roth.
All right.
Football team's looking strong.
Yes, I think we're right at 500 now.
Yeah, yeah. See them in the playoffs.
All right. Next item on the agenda, semi-annual report from the Leavenworth County Development Corporation.
Steve Jack, the Executive Director of LCDC here. Thank you, folks. A pleasure to be here. And maybe I shouldn't be over there, or I could just use this? Okay, great. All right.
Do whatever you want.
Oh, you just changed seats.
It's like the...
Change seats might be easier.
It's like the first time I've done this. You'd think I'd figured it out by now, and I do appreciate...
Take it easy on this manager. He's celebrated a while, so...
Yeah, I know.
I do appreciate your city manager's management capabilities of your speakers. Last time I was here, I got in a little coughing spigot. I appreciate the water. Let's talk about, there it goes again, the unemployment rate. This is the map from the latest figures, August of 2021. Those figures will be updated in the next week or so. We stand at 4%. Some of the surrounding counties, Wyandotte is at 5.4, Atchison at 5. We're the same as Douglas County at 4.0. And then, Shawnee is just a notch under our 4.0 at 3.9. Johnson County is 3.4. You can see those counties out west, they're in the 2s. And I'm guessing at some point, they were actually just under 2. Looks like everybody's about 2 to 3 out west. Sedgwick County, Wichita area, 5.5% unemployment. Montgomery County and Neosho are at 5.1 and 5.7. So, 4.0 is about where we have historically been in okay times, pretty good times. Now, what I thought was interesting, though, was not necessarily to go back a year ago during the pandemic, or we were just getting out of the pandemic. I think we reached 12.4% unemployment for Leavenworth County at the height. But that was in April, when everything got shut down. Started to get shut down in mid-March, and then, by April and May, it shut down to, and 12.4% of the folks that were employed were no longer in their jobs. But in August of 2020, we were at 5.9%. And clearly, we were still coming, we were in the middle of the pandemic and making some progress of coming out of it, but we hadn't entirely. So, 4%, that story is fine, but it's pretty obvious. What I thought would be interesting is to go back two years and compare August of 2019 to August of 2021. And we were at 3.6% in August of 2019. Now, we're at 4%. So, it looks like we're a little bit higher than we were when things were really humming. The city of Leavenworth was even closer from August of 2019. We were at 4.2%. Now, we're at 4.4%. And then, Leavenworth County, the balance of area, the other communities plus the outlying areas, everything but the city limits of Leavenworth, 3.9% now. And we were at 3.3% in August of 2019. The next slide is my favorite because it's simpler than the slides that I've shown you in the past. And for those, I apologize. This one is pretty straightforward. In August of 2019, just the number in the county that were employed are the blue bars, 35,855. And then, in August of 2020, it dipped 2,355 folks. And actually, the 2,355 is the difference between the next year now, August of 2021, 36,308. So, we've grown from August of 2020 by 23, almost 24, 400. We are actually at, and the real comparison is August of 2019 to 2021, we went from 35,855 to 36,308. So, that as a county, we actually have more people employed today. We're not only back, but we are 453 more than we had pre-pandemic. Now, the city in the yellow, we were at 13,702, dropped to 12,881 in August of 2020, and now are almost back to where the city was in employment, 13,666, which is just a difference, pretty statistically, pretty negligible, 36 people. Now, on September 4th, the extended and somewhat controversial extended unemployment insurance benefits ran out. So, the figures that we should see here later in mid-October that will report September should reflect those folks that, according to one perspective, were just sitting at home collecting this extended unemployment. That's over. And if that's what was happening, then all those people should be coming back to jobs. But, again, there are more people employed than there were before the pandemic. And so, I think that it is likely to be systemic, that the system has changed, that expectations of workers, particularly those that are making $213 plus tips in restaurants and other places that pay minimum wage, may have changed during this period of time. And those folks are either no longer in the workforce or found another job that paid more. And so, for those folks that are used to, particularly the jobs that rely on tips, may find it difficult to keep that same pay scale. And I would say that those employers in town, and I will give you the example of the one we've turned to a lot, one of our highest-producing job factories in the Gary Carlson Park, the cereal ingredients company. When they came to town, they were paying $10, $11 an hour. And then, they reached a point when they got to 55 employees that, well, we want to go to 75 and 80. They had to bump it up to $12 an hour. And then, they got to a point where they couldn't keep the 75 or 80 that they had, so they went to 12. And then, they went to 13, it's just a stair step. Then, they went to 14. Then, they went to 15. And then, they went to 16 and 17 and 18. And now, they're at $18, $19 an hour with the shift differential. And they have 200 employees. And so, when you have customers that are relying on product to be made, then you have to weigh the cost of making that product, and labor costs are a part of them. And so, the companies that wanted to expand have found ways to find those workers. And so, it's not that it's not a problem that there is a labor shortage in certain industries, it's just what do we do about it as a company?
Can I ask you a question about cereal ingredients, Mr. Hatch? Are they being affected by supply chain delays and the supply chain problems throughout the world? Has he talked to you at all about that?
He hasn't. They are, they, and you know, we worked with them on an expansion project they had with one of major projects, one major food producers. And which, and that major food producer told them they needed, we needed more geographic diversity. And so, they didn't want to put all their eggs in one geographic basket in the north end of the Gary Carlson Park, and heaven forbid, something happened. And so, they're building a plant for a specific product in St. Joe. But they still have plans to expand, and they're picking up new product line. But they don't have, you know, they don't have hundreds of trucks in and out a day. Their product is pretty small, as small as the specks in Cool Ranch Doritos. And so, not as much.
Okay.
So...
Thank you.
Yep. Good question, though. So, let's, and I've heard Tim Cowden and all the folks at KCADC describe the recruitment projects that they have as a pipeline. And I haven't really, I think I used it five times today in my presentation to the Port Authority, because I like it. And it really maybe represents something that's a little different. In the past, when I've talked about projects, and they all have these code names because, for confidentiality reasons, they're a part of a pipeline. We don't think about it as a pipeline because we don't have typically not at first direct contact with the customer or with a site consultant. It's usually the Kansas Department of Commerce's representative in LA or Chicago or New York or Dallas or in Missouri or in Kansas City. Or Chris Gutierrez with the Kansas City Smart Port, or Tim Cowden, or Jill McCarthy. Those folks, we have a relationship with. And so, we fill out these requests for information or requests for proposal. And then, every once in a while, we hear back from that representative at Commerce or KCADC for follow-up information. And then, sometimes, the project doesn't happen. We don't know whether it happened. Sometimes, they don't get back to KCADC or Commerce. And we're talking about the bigger projects, because we do have about 30%, 35% of our projects, we generate ourselves and our own leads. But a lot of the major ones, they're going to go to a regional organization like KCADC or a state organization like the Kansas Department of Commerce. The ones that we have now are, feel like more of a pipeline because we have, we're having conversations directly with the site consultant. We know what our competition is, in some cases, who it is. We know whether we might have a shot at a project or not. And they're coming back again a second time or a third time for additional information. All that sends a more positive signal to us, who've been sitting in this seat for a long time, that something's different now. And obviously, these projects that have these interesting names like Arch or Singularity or Holmes or Watch or Serendipity, projects like the Hills Project had a project name. As a matter of fact, it had two names. It was originally Project Table, and then, it was Project Storm because Table was a stupid name. And it was all decided...
Storm's a brilliant name.
Pardon?
And Storm's a brilliant name.
Storm is a brilliant name, exactly. And so, all these projects are real projects, and we've made some progress. And I won't go into too much detail, but Project Arch is a 50-plus acre shovel-ready site need. They want to build a large building. We submitted the Leavenworth Business in Tech Park. We're working directly with the site consultant. And we hope to have, that they will have a decision this last quarter of 2021. Project Singularity, they were looking for a 20-acre site to build a 40,000 to 80,000 square foot building. And again, we submitted the Leavenworth Business in Tech Park. We responded to the RFI, and we're not working directly, in this case, with a consultant. But they did request some follow-up information, which we gave them in October. And we're working with the State International Recruitment Staff. Project Holmes is a KCADC project, an advanced technology manufacturing use, 10 acres, owned, light industrial. And we, again, submitted the Leavenworth Business in Tech Park. And then, Project Watch, which is a Commerce project, looking for 25 to 40 acres to, again... acres to again build a three to four hundred thousand square foot building, and we again submitted the Leavenworth Business in Tech Park. None of those projects we would even be here talking about had we not had a park to submit. They, they're looking for shovel-ready. In many ways, our park here is more shovel-ready than some in other communities that are kind of shovel-ready, that they're pitching. So in some cases, ours has an advantage. Now, we do have to address the issue, particularly with those companies that are looking for really great access to I-70, the distance factor, but in some of these cases, we've been told that's not going to be a problem for their companies. So, and, and we have pointed out a variety of improvements, all the improvements that the county does, the state does, the city does, the four-laning of Eisenhower, the improvements at Eisenhower and K-7, the R-cut at Parallel, the, the four-laning of Replacement Bridge for Centennial, all the work that y'all did on Metropolitan and KDOT, the improvements on Fourth Street, all of those improvements are in our package. And what, when Paul and I talked to these companies, we're telling them, we're, we're aware of who we are and where we are, and we want to get you out on the interstate, because we don't have the, the rail access, so we know you're going to ship your product in and out via truck. And so we'll, we'll, we'll help you with that, and we're thinking about that. Then Project Serendipity is an interesting one. It's an international company, they're exploring a partnership, they're focused on Leavenworth Company, and we met with the company, well, we've met a couple of times with the company, and then Lisa and Rondi from the Kansas Department of Commerce met with the company earlier today. So those are five projects in the pipeline for, for the city of Leavenworth. And we've got a couple of projects that look really interesting in Tonganoxie as well. Now, the Kansas Veterans Home.
Can I ask one question?
Yes, yes, sir.
The transportation, and I think that's really good to, to lean forward with respect to the transportation challenge that I think we have as a county, city. But there is a transportation study that the Leavenworth County Port Authority is trying to get, has put it out in RFP, and so we may have, I mean, once that study is done, there could be either additional options maybe going forward, right, for the county?
Yes.
As far as transportation, making it a little bit easier?
Right, exactly. Yeah, yeah.
And what, do you know what the timeline is for, for that particular study? Is it like early two thousand twenty-two or?
Well, the, the county submitted an RFI for the consultant, the engineering firm, and they had one company or.
Responded.
Responded, two companies together as one response. And so it went back out, and I can't remember what Greg said just this noon.
Yeah, I think December sixth or ninth is when the.
Deadline, new deadline, so see if they can get more.
Okay, well, I, I just mentioned that, because that's something that Mr. Greg Cause and the Leavenworth County Port Authority has been working on, and I think it's work, work that has to be done, and I'm, I'm happy that, you know, at some, sometime in two thousand twenty-two, I would have expected to be done.
Yeah. And, and, and I know that, that Greg and the Port Authority appreciate this commission's investment in that. He went to each of the four major cities in the county. No one voted against it, went to the county, they've got money in it, KDOT, then he could turn to KDOT, they've got money in it, and so it should be a substantial. And there were some people who had a pet project or two. And I think the value that the Port Authority was, and Greg Cause, leading that effort, was, let's look at, I think Paul has made some comments too, let's look at the whole county. Let's not look just at a, a road here or a bridge there. And so the, the road, the bridge, and everybody else's projects will be looked at over the next year, so.
Thank you.
Can we kind of hold the questions till the end? Let him go ahead, since he worked hard on this presentation. Thank you.
Well, not that hard. No.
I know you did. I'm not too over here.
Yeah. Yeah, and if you missed this, you can hear the Rotary on the tenth of November.
Okay.
No, I'll, I'll do a different presentation then. The Kansas Veterans Home, this was the, came out of the Kansas Commission on Veterans Affairs Office, thirty million dollar project, sixty-five percent's going to be funded from the federal government, thirty-five, by the state, one hundred and twenty-five jobs. That's the good news. And, and I guess the good news is that I-70 corridor from Junction City, Fort Riley, all the way east to K-7, and explicit in the RFP, up to Lansing and Leavenworth on K-7, those two corridors are in the mix. There's a Veterans Home in Dodge City, there's one in Windfield, there's nothing in this part of the state. South central Kansas, southeast, or southwest Kansas, but nothing in the eastern part of the state and the northeast. But they're looking for twenty-five to fifty acres near the metro area. And again, the, the corridors, close to hospital and critical, critical care facilities. And we thought that Eisenhower Ridge VA Campus might be a great place to put it, but when we finally saw the RFI that came out a couple of weeks ago, that will not qualify under the language in the RFP, because the commission wants to own the building and the land. And that's on a long-term lease that Pirate Development has to redevelop those buildings and the grounds at the, the VA Campus. The proposal is, I think it's actually the second, which is at noon on Tuesday, the second, so November first, November second, when we are to let them know we have a site and we're interested. And then the final proposal is due November sixteenth. It is a challenge, I, we talked about it at the, briefly at the Port Authority meeting, we talked last week at the LCDC meeting. We sent out the RFP to each of the city managers, I sent it to Mike Riley and Jeremy Greenemeyer and other realtors, other developers, to see, because finding twenty-five to fifty acres that you don't already have, like our business parks, which this wouldn't be a fit, is, is a challenge. And so we're going to try to give it our, our best shot and try to find someone that, that we can submit some sort of presentation representing our area. Because I know our elected officials in Topeka worked hard to get it, but the challenge was that the language in the RFP makes it difficult to turn to the one cards that we thought we had in our hands that might give us an advantage. So, anyway, but that's also a, a project that we're doing some work on. Now, I, I want to do something briefly that typically don't do, I, if I make a presentation to Tonganoxie, I talk about Tonganoxie stuff, if I, I make a presentation to you all, I talk about the city of Leavenworth projects. But I, I do think it's important to look at the four of our, three of our four business parks and, and talk about some of the successes we've had, and then in the next slide or two, talk about the reasons why and why it's important. The Hills Pet Nutrition Project that was announced a few months ago in Tonganoxie Business Park, they took eighty-three acres of the hundred and thirty-five. There were a hundred and one left, because Unilock had, had taken all but a hundred and one, they took thirty-four. Eighty-three acres, and they actually had two lots, and then they carved out another sixteen to get to the eighty-three. It'll be low on jobs, eighty, low, that's a lot of jobs, but it's for a building that large and for the capital investment, not as many as, as one might think. But they're pretty high-wage jobs, sixty, sixty-five thousand a year. And then the capital investment, after the initial press release of two hundred and fifty million, got bumped up to three hundred and twenty-five million, so it'll actually be a larger project. Closer to our home here, in the Gary Carlson Business Park, the Modern Advanced Printing Solutions Company, MAPS, is moving dirt as we speak on the three-acre lot, twenty-one new jobs, ten thousand four hundred square foot building, it'd be a very nice building, maybe a little different than, a little more upscale than some of the, the metal buildings in the park. The Port Authority LCDC Building Loan Program loaned that company two hundred thousand, which reduced the amount they needed to borrow from a bank. And so that's the first recipient of a new program that was the brainchild of, of Dan Gutshull. So we're excited about that project. Wilson Glass in Urban Hess, in the Urban Hess Business Park, they brought five new jobs in a five thousand square foot metal building to the Urban Hess Park. That was followed by IST in Urban Hess, seventeen new jobs in a sixty-four hundred square foot building. And they are building, just starting, last week, they got approval from Planning and Zoning in Tonganoxie for a second building of fourteen thousand square feet, and then today I heard Travis describe it as sixteen thousand square feet, so quite a bit bigger. It'll be the largest building in, in Urban Hess. And he has an interest in purchasing a third lot in Urban Hess. And then HMC Performance Coating, a powder coating company, was not a Port Authority project, because the land had been sold a long time ago to the Campbell, Campbell Family, and they build a ten thousand square foot building. So that's a lot of building in the last eighteen months or so. So, so the question is, why are we having this success? And I think that, that there are a couple of factors, there are probably more than, than a couple of factors. We're not in a pandemic, we were a year ago, but a lot of these started a year ago. We are not, you know, ten, twelve years ago, coming out of a recession, so that's good. But there were a couple of things that happened. One, changes in the law governing the Port Authority. And we, I, I was trying to do a deal in Urban Hess to a, a local developer who wanted to buy four lots, and we were trying to discount the land, and that, that, it got all the way to the title company, and the title company read us back the, the state law that was established Port Authorities in, in two thousand and, no, I mean, two thousand, it was nineteen sixty-nine. And in there, Port Authorities can sell land, but they couldn't sell land below appraised value. Well, we had been asking forty thousand, which is about appraised value per acre, and so we had the law changed. We just wrote a clause in it and gave the Port Authority the authority if the Port Authority feels it's in the public interest because of increased tax revenue, new jobs, capital investment, and they make that decision if they want to negotiate. We got it through a first try in the session of two thousand seventeen, and that allowed us to sell land at ten thousand an acre instead of forty thousand an acre, and the lands are, the, the lots are starting to sell, including here at Gary Carlson. And then obviously, the investment that the cities and the county made in the Tonganoxie Business Park and the Leavenworth Business and, and Technology Park. Why is this important? Well, Basic Industries, and I think maybe every year or so, we ought to bring this out and remind folks that Basic Industries bring in new capital from outside the area into our county, into our community, that drives the local economy. And so these are folks that are selling a, a product or a service, like the CPAC, that's selling a service in a twelve-state area, the Consolidated Patient Account Center of the VA, they're bringing in dollars, all those federal dollars are coming in, that's driving the economy, just like the Fort does. But manufacturers, food processors, distribution logistics, RND, regional or national service companies are included in that. And the kinds of businesses that we're working with on the other side of town are those kinds of businesses that are driving the need for retail and commercial and the like. And so we may not see them on the main drag, these companies like Cereal Ingredients, but they have a profound impact on downtown Leavenworth and all the businesses on, on K-7. The other thing is, it helps the property tax base in the city and the county. And the Hills facility will generate the same property tax revenue, and I say eventually, because they got abatement, but when that abatement goes off, it would be as if we built eleven hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollar homes. Without the same stress on the city services, because it's unlikely that Tonganoxie will hire new firemen, new staff for their police department for one building with, with eighty folks, maybe one or two, but if you put a development of eleven hundred new homes and bring in three or four thousand new people, it's going to have an impact. So that's not even a fair comparison. So these businesses get, the, the valuation of those businesses gets taxed at twenty-five percent, homes get taxed at eleven and a half percent. So these kinds of businesses are really important to the tax base in, in, in the county and in the cities. The business park status today, since we're talking about the business parks, Gary Carlson Business Park, five hundred jobs, three lots are available, twenty-two acres, just a little more than that, it's sixty-three percent filled. Urban Hess Business Park, about a hundred jobs, smaller lots, seven available, twenty acres, about half-filled, and then one active prospect that we talked about. Tonganoxie Business Park, a hundred-plus jobs after construction, and then there should be another couple dozen when the manufacturing side of Unilock comes online in about twenty-four months. And there are three lots available now, we're down to twenty-four acres. So if there's anything larger than about twelve acres, then the Leavenworth Business and Tech Park is the only game in town, or in the county. Lansing Business Center, I'm guessing on the twenty-five jobs, it's in the fifteen to thirty job range. There are still three lots available, but only six acres, and it's eighty-five percent filled. And then we still have seventy acres, it's an eighty-acre parcel, but, but of buildable land, seventy acres available. And we have four, as you heard, four active projects or prospects that we're working with today. And then finally, marketing, networking, presentations in the third and fourth quarter. KCADC, KC Real Estate Council had their annual event at the K, the baseball game on August eighteenth. Kansas Manufacturing Solutions and Kansas Chamber did a tour of Central Bag, Great Western and Zephyr, we were a part of that. In September, we had our golf tournament the next day. KEDA, the ones in, that are italicized are Zoom. So we did our KEDA Fall Virtual Conference, September twenty-one and twenty-two. SILR event I attended in Kansas City at Union Station on the twenty-third, that's a society for industrial and office realtors. IAMC Fall Forum, a fantastic four-day conference, that's the International Asset Management Council, so you've got people who are the real estate execs for PepsiCo, for Bimbo Bakeries, for large corporations, Frito-Lay, Hallmark. Those real estate folks were there, in addition to economic developers, in addition to site consultants, it's about a third of each group. The Kansas Economic Policy Conference, well, I skipped one, Women and Economic Development Forum happened October twelfth through the fourteenth, and Lisa Hack on our, our staff attended that in Chicago. The Kansas Economic Policy Conference on October twenty-first is coming up this week, that's a virtual thing out of KU. KCADC ED Alliance as a site consultant, that will be virtual, though. Lisa will be attending the Team Kansas Dinner in Dallas on November fourth. We've got our annual meeting on, on November fifth, and I think Paul is going to join us to represent the city at the annual meeting, which will be held in person. Leavenworth Rotary Club, I mentioned, on November ten, Main Street Annual Banquet will be there, Lisa and I will be. And then our KCADC Annual Meeting will be January twenty-first, and we've asked the President and CEO of Hills Pet Nutrition to be our keynote, and they've agreed to, to do that, and so we're, we're very excited about that. And then you may have heard. And then you may have heard in the paper or Facebook or some way, the rumor that I'm retiring, which I am, in a few months, a couple months. Seems like a while, but I've got a lot to do in the next two and a half months, but at the end of this year. So it won't be quite fifteen years, a couple months shy of fifteen years.
It seems like you just got here.
It does seem that way. And I had thought I'd worn out my welcome. But no, I appreciate working with you all. I think you understand the importance of what our organization does, the importance of Port Authority. It's been, it was a joy to work with Scott Miller. It's been a joy to work with Paul Kramer. And city staff is professional, outstanding, and this elected body has been real leaders. And so we're working on a couple of projects, you know we are, and we'll see what we can do the last couple of months. And we may, some of these projects may spill over into the early part, first quarter of two thousand twenty-one, but we hope to have some good news for you soon.
Great.
So thank you.
Yeah, it's been great working with you two.
Yeah, congratulations.
That you're dedicated to making us prosperous and making our communities better. And we do appreciate that.
Thank you.
I have a question too. We'll open up to questions.
I just want to thank you for all you've done. I've been on the commission since two thousand nine. You've been presenting ever since I've been on. And obviously, you started a couple of years before. Professionalism you have shown, professionalism of your office, what you've been able to do, what you've tried to bring to our community, whether it be the city or the county as a whole, has just been outstanding. And just the professionalism of your group and the desire to do what's the best for the city of Leavenworth, county of Leavenworth, individual cities in Leavenworth is just unsurpassed, and you will be missed. And from this commissioner, and I think I speak for, I know many citizens in this town, we thank you very much in what you've done, you did well. Thank you.
Thank you.
I echo Commissioner Preisinger's comments, and thank you for your service, just about a decade and a half, to the county. It's been very distinguished service and to the cities of the county. Thank you very much. As Commissioner Preisinger said, you will be missed, but I wish you the very best in your, the next phase of your life where you'll have a little bit more time to kick back. But I do appreciate, in the time I've been city commissioner, in terms of your professional presentations, transparency, and just the aggressiveness of going after these projects. And we've had success, but we're also looking forward to more success in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Do you have any questions?
No, just congratulations to Mr. Jack again. And what are you going to do?
So I went to Mel Henderson's retirement, and I think he was fifty-two or fifty-three when he retired from Mid-America Regional Council. And he said, somebody asked him that question, and his response was, what about the word retirement do you not understand? That's not exactly true, because I think he moved to Florida, and then it's like he's just like hanging on the beach. No, he's doing something, so I'll do something.
You'll do something.
And then I, one of my colleagues in Emporia, who's been at Emporia twenty-three years doing economic development, and he got a Hills plant about twelve years before I got a Hills plant. And I asked him what he'd be doing, and he said, anything I want.
Yeah.
So I don't know, it just seemed like about the right time. I'm very, if you can't tell, excited about some of the stuff on the bullet points up there. I'm really excited.
Oh, yes.
And, you know, you can go over, or you get one, I don't know, but I'm very excited about it. But I don't know whether there's a perfect time. And if there was a time to hand it off to somebody, it would be when there's activity, when there's still things going on that are positive. I know we have our challenges financially with decisions made by the county commission on funding. But in terms of prospects, our relationship with KCADC, our relationship with the Department of Commerce, never been better. So I'm excited for the next chapter. I'm not moving. We own a home, I've got six years more mortgage to pay on a home, and I don't want to move my albums.
Okay. There you go.
Thank you.
So I'll be around.
Thank you. I did have one quick question. On the veteran's home, it said close to hospital and critical care. Would the VA qualify for that as a full-service hospital and critical care?
Yeah, I think so.
I'm not sure what all services they provide.
Well, I think that we're talking about not, I think, our thought is not like next door to those services, but rather a part of the metro area.
Okay.
That, and that's why they had, I think I mentioned in that, in those bullets, they wanted to be closer to a metro. So yeah, there's a corridor, but I'm not sure in the middle of Wabunsee County that that's the place they want to be. They want to be a little closer to hospitals and other critical care facilities. And certainly, the VA, Topeka, the VA here in Leavenworth are an advantage.
It is certainly needed. I'm really glad that you're working on it, and our legislators worked on it too.
I hope we get it.
And thank you for, again, you know, say everything, I agree with everything everybody said here. It's been great working with you. And always have a smile on your face, and you've always got something good for us. So I'm really, I'm really having enjoyed the time with you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. If you want me to come back next year and do PowerPoints.
You're really good at it.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. All right. Next item on the agenda, annual review of snow and ice control operation plan.
Brian Faust, Director of Public Works, and Becky Beaver, our sheets foreman for this evening.
Good evening. Welcome, Becky.
Hi.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. This evening, we'd like to do a quick review of the Snow and Ice Control Operation Plan. The plan has been in place since nineteen ninety-three, and there are no changes this year on how we will attack snow and ice. The main change since last year was an update to the emergency snow routes to reflect routes identified in ordinance passed in November of two thousand twenty. And the updated map and listings are located in Appendix Two of the plan. One of the purposes of the review is to remind both city crews and residents that winter weather is just around the corner, and that reviewing the plan and preparing now will help reduce issues when the weather hits. And when the weather does hit, coordination and open lines of communications with other agencies is critical. To this end, city staff held snow control meetings on October twelfth with the school district, the city of Lansing, Leavenworth County, and Fort Leavenworth to discuss and coordinate areas of responsibilities. Fort Leavenworth did state that they plan to make a termination the day before in advance to allow some workers to stay home. That should help reduce or eliminate early dispenses from the fort. We've also met with our independent contractors that primarily work on removing snow from our residential streets. In the plan, starting on page one, we list the priorities for clearing our streets. This starts with our emergency snow routes first and working down to our residential streets. When an event is forecast, we would strongly encourage those that park on any city street to move their vehicles before we plow. This helps speed up snow removal and allows our crews to get closer to the curb line. If the city manager does declare a traffic emergency, as defined within page two of our report, cars parked along the emergency snow routes may be towed, and that would be at the owner's expense. Another thing on page three and four of the plan, we do define these various storm classifications. Class A is our most extreme event, where we expect to receive eight inches of snow or more within a twenty-four hour period. And we also list ice storms as a class A event also. Staff is currently prepping the equipment for winter usage, and will continue training with equipment and driving routes to familiarize ourselves with both. Our salt dome is full, and the commission recently approved additional salt purchases if necessary through a cooperative bid with Leavenworth County. As far as crews dedicated for snow removal, each storm is unique, and depending on the storm classification and duration, we typically run two twelve-hour shifts. Fully staffed shifts will have seven pieces of equipment in operation, including two trucks hitting our hotspots and five trucks on our emergency snow routes. One thing the city does have is we do have GPS on our plows, and so we're able to identify when our emergency snow routes have been hit. And if we do plow residential streets, it'll also track those. There are a couple items that come up in every community, I've been in a number of communities over the years, during snow removal. The first is, I cleared my driveway and the city just plowed me shut. This can be frustrating, I get plowed shut too. But the city's focus is on clearing the streets, and we're not staffed or equipped to come back and clear individual driveways. The second is, am I responsible for clearing my sidewalks and ADA ramps? And the short answer to that is yes. City code requires properties that have sidewalks to clear sidewalks and ramps. It's safer for children walking to school to use shovel sidewalks versus walking in the street. It's also critical for our residents with mobility challenges to have clear sidewalks and ramps to be able to access critical services. We do ask residents to remember others when clearing the sidewalks. And with that, we have Becky here this evening and Derek in the back.
And we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
I have a question.
Go ahead, yes.
The relationship between the city employees and the contractors that you, that we bring in to help with the snow, can you just briefly describe that relationship? And do the contractors get any training from the city staff?
Well, we met with the contractors. We have two contractors, one works the west side of town, one works the east side. They've been doing it for a number of years, so that they know the routes. We do have two people within engineering that monitor their work, but make sure that they actually do do the streets that they're supposed to.
And are they just called out when necessary, when the snow falls of such of an amount and such intensity, or?
Right, the plan says that when we get three inches or more, that'll be a determination made by me. If it's going to be sixty degrees the next day, do we want to do that? So that each, like I said, each individual storm is very unique.
Thank you.
Mr. Faust, can you or a member of your staff review where you do double plowing? Some streets, I know it's just one shot down residential streets, there seems to be some confusion. Some people say, I live on a street, that snowplow just comes down one time in the middle of the street while other sides, you know, they go curb to curb.
And I would say our residential streets, I mean, our policy is one up and one down on the residential streets. It gets a challenge, we have people parked on both sides, and you're doing a kind of slalom through them. And that's like, so we encourage people, if you could just, if you could remove your car from the street, it's going to help quite a bit. We can get a lot closer to the curb. Our emergency snow routes are typically our wider streets, our collectors and arterials, and we definitely try to get those cleaner.
Those are complaints I think many people on the commission receive. We get the driveway complaints, obviously, and then, you know, they're clear Tenth Avenue, curb to curb, and they just make one pass up and down my street. But I understand that's the process and the procedure. Thank you.
Yeah, if there's a curb, and some of them, like my street, just has no curb, and so there, it's basically a narrow street. So it's not going to be totally, totally clear, it never is, so. Any other questions?
I just have a question. Downtown, what does the snow put in some of the municipal, how does, you know, once you get the snow off the streets, where is it deposited?
Second and Chalk Town.
Second and Chalk Town, okay. Is that a parking lot there?
It's a city-owned lot, just kind of across from the Justice Center.
Isn't it south of Chalk Town, which it's behind the old?
Kind of next door to Auto Haven, where Auto Haven used to be.
Yeah. Isn't it like Second?
Second and Chalk Town?
Second and Oak or something, isn't it?
What is it, or is Chestnut, Second and Chestnut?
Yeah. I know where it is, yeah.
Okay.
Keepers Millings?
Yeah, that's where Keepers Millings is.
So what does Farmers Almanac say about this winter?
It depends if you're in the Farmers Almanac or the old Farmers Almanac.
Of course, of course.
Farmers Almanac is actually a colder winter than normal.
What about precipitation? That's what we're talking about here.
The way I read it was it's about, I think, about normal precipitation across the board, but colder.
Okay.
Okay. That's not too bad. Commissioner, do you have a question?
I do. So people are responsible to clear their own sidewalks, you said, so when, what happens when they don't?
It's in the code, they could be issued a citation if they don't. I don't know if that's something that's.
Right, is that enforced? Or?
We just encourage compliance with the ordinance.
Okay.
And then we take complaint-based calls, but.
Okay. That's all I have.
I guess it depends on how many kids you see walking in the street, if there's a sidewalk there. Okay, I don't have any other questions. I guess you meet with the other cities, are their policies pretty similar to ours then? Or everybody does, perhaps do the same thing?
Yeah.
And a nice thing in that meeting we had on the twelfth, it's my first snow meeting with the group, and Becky's been doing it for years, and a really good group of people. And they very much talk about inter-agency cooperation.
Good.
If we need help, they'll help, if they need help, we'll help. It was a very good group.
That sounds good, I'd like to hear that. We do like to hear that. Okay, anything else? If not, thank you so much.
No, thank you. Thank you.
You sat here all night, you didn't get to speak?
Yeah, no, Becky.
Or Derek, yeah, Derek.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
That's a good, that's a good plan, by the way. I like that plan.
Very good.
Okay. Next item on the agenda, discuss change in commission, city commission meeting.
Madam Mayor and Commissioner, just a final, small items. The last couple of years with different commissioners, we've talked about the city commission meetings being held at seven PM. That is set by ordinance, which I've included in your packet, section two dash fifty-two of the Code of Ordinances, that's the meeting for Second and Fourth Tuesdays at seven PM. If you look at most of the other official meetings the city holds, Planning Commission, Board of Zoning Appeals, and then some neighboring governing body meetings like the school district, those are all held at six PM. I think seven PM and evening meetings are traditionally designed for residents who may every once in a while have an item on the agenda to be able to make it to those meetings. It seems that seven, six PM is more of the standard in this area. It also allows people who may have an item to not be here so late, if they're later on the agenda. It's not a pressing item, it is, would have to be done through a ordinance change, which would require a first reading and a second reading. Be something we would set as a future date. But in discussion, it seems that most people would be in favor of this, so it's up for discussion tonight, if you'd like it, starting the process of moving the meetings to six o'clock, as it opens in the winter months, you know, with late meetings and it gets darker earlier and such. So the items just before you for discussion.
Discussion? Yes. No, I think that's a great idea. I was instrumental in changing the time for the planning commission when I was on it. So it was at seven, and yeah, we changed it to six. So, yeah, I am all for that.
Okay. Any other?
I'm, I'm up for whatever's decided. Makes no difference to me whether we go at six or seven. I do see the wisdom in going at six, and I'm all for it. If the rest of the commission wants to keep it at seven, I'm all for it. So, yeah.
I'm comfortable with switching it to six, particularly, I mean, we don't, most of our meetings don't last two or two and a half hours, but sometimes they do. And I think it would be, under those circumstances, a six PM starting time would be good. And I think the fact that our, many of our advisory boards or subordinate commissions start at six PM, I'd be comfortable and supportive of a change.
Well, I was, you know, concerned about residents coming in, you know, and wanting to be a part of the process. And I think for most people, unless they work in Kansas City, they can get here by six o'clock. And for some people, especially for the staff, to being able to just stay after work rather than, I mean, I could do that. I could stay at work and then come in here right after work instead of going home and then coming back. So I would be okay with that as well.
I did speak to Commissioner Wilson, he's in favor of it as well, he wanted me to. I did speak to Commissioner Wilson, he's in favor of it as well, he wanted me to express that. It would obviously be the most important to get that public information out, so we put it on first consideration. We would set a meeting date, and we would heavily publicize the shift.
We have an open meeting for the public then, too?
Right.
Okay, I'd be fine with that, to move forward with that.
Sounds good.
Yeah, great. Everybody else?
Great.
All right, anything else, Mr. Kramer?
Just very briefly, our PIO did a good job of showing Doherty Park Playground under construction right now. It took a little while to get the equipment, a little longer than we thought, and then we had it at the Service Center in crates for a while, and it took a little while to get a crew out. You know, there's both equipment and commodity shortages, but then there's labor shortages, so the crew from the contracting company had to come out, so they are installing it now. So, really excited about that, sort of the last big project of the year. And then just remind everybody about the Truck or Treat, which is Saturday night at five, looks like the weather's going to be pretty good out there at Sportsfield, and we have quite a few candy vendors signed up for that, so really excited about that project.
Great.
Thanks.
Sounds good. Commissioner Preisinger, anything?
Just one thing I've thought about a couple of times, it came to mind again during Mr. Paus' presentation. He mentioned, and it's in the packet, that the snow routes or snow emergencies are broadcast to the public on our cable access channel two. With AT&amp;T making a pretty good inroads in town now with AT&amp;T and Spectrum, people with AT&amp;T don't have this channel two, that's only a Spectrum. I'm wondering if we can work with AT&amp;T, if they can have a channel two-type channel, because I think a lot of people are moving to AT&amp;T.
It's a great idea.
Yeah, so, I don't know if we can just talk to AT&amp;T and see what they offer, if that's a possibility.
We'll look into it.
Thank you.
I'd like to, yesterday, General Colin Powell passed away, a great American, a great soldier, a great leader, and our country will really miss him. And I just wanted to mention that, and my condolences to his wife and the rest of his family, and to the American people at large. He, of course, had an assignment up here as a brigadier general, probably back in the, I don't know, the eighties sometime. But, so he did have a connection to Leavenworth and Fort Leavenworth, and he was back here on a few occasions to dedicate, for instance, the Buffalo Soldiers Monument in nineteen ninety-two. He, there was a bust dedicated to him, put in Monument Park, which is just to the north of the Buffalo Soldiers Monument, so he was here in 2014 with his wife, and he was honored. So, he was a member, at least for some of his life, as a member of this community, and I just would like to mark his passing and just offer my condolences to the family and to America at large, and our city.
Yeah, I'd like to say too, to add on to that, is that Richard Allen Cultural Center has a wonderful display on General Colin Powell and his history here in Leavenworth, so it's worth it to go see. I know that Anna Wagner there talked to the media the other day.
That's right.
And the Garrison talked to the media too about his time here, so, anyway, yes, he was a great man. Commissioner?
No, I just want to say, get out there and vote, advance voting, just go to the county clerk's office.
Thank you, thank you. I wanted to say about the park, you were talking about the park, Stubby Park, I just, I go by there all the time, it is busy, I mean, busy all the time. When are, when are we going to get the bathrooms?
Okay, so.
I've got a thing about bathrooms, I don't know what it is.
No, it's good.
It's a good question, I think it brought some questions up when we did Doherty Park. So, fully funded for 2022 are restroom for Havens Park, a restroom for Stubby Park, and a new Splash Park at Hawthorne Park. We got to get the splash pad rolling, so it's ready for the start of the season, and the bathrooms at the same time, so I would, I would look for groundbreaking early in the spring on both of those.
That's great, yeah, I know there's just so many kids over there, and it's just really great to see that being used.
Right, it's great to see.
With the snow coming down, and it'll be, they'll still be out there in the winters.
It's a great problem to have, that we have to improve our perks, because people are going to them, but it's great.
Well, I don't have anything else, if we have nothing else, then we will adjourn.